Okay, we're good to go.
Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This meeting is a special session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County Coachees, State of Arizona. It's being held on Tuesday, March 29th, at 5:40 PM in the City of Bisbee Council chambers. Sorry for a little late. The storm seems to have provided us some good rain, but a little bit of delay. So outside of that, we'll move forward with this special session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lynetta Hill. Councilmember Joni Giacchino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns is excused. Councilmember Mel Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Crane.
Here.
City staff Stephen Hawken, City Manager Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Kerry Bagley, Finance Director, Joelle Lenders, Personnel Director, Alberti Chavet, Police Chief, Jim Richardson, Acting Fire Chief, Joestis, City Attorney.
All right, thank you. Item one tonight is a presentation. I'm going to turn this over to our City Manager, who will introduce and give us a background and will move forward on this very important issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Despite the weather and the technical difficulties, it seems like we're actually getting it all together here. So, good evening to those of you who are watching on Zoom tonight, too. And I'm sure we'll be calling on you regularly through the course of the evening. Tonight, what we are going to do is we're going to get a presentation primarily from STIFEL, which is our financial advisors, as well as from the Public Safety Retirement System. Do we have public safety retirement people on?
Yeah.
Clark says it. Oh, hi, Clark. Sorry, bud.
Hi.
So.
You're good.
Anyway, the subject, of course, is the condition that we find ourselves in with the public safety retirement system. And I'm not going to go into a great deal of detail about it because Mr. Reader is. What we've been doing for the last year, mostly I'm talking about myself and Kerry Bagley, our Finance Director, and Mayor Budge, who has some experience both as a pensioner in a public safety system from another state, as well as 27 years as a firefighter. And along with Mr. Reader and his associates, along with a lot of conversations off and on through the year, more on now than off, with public safety retirement system executives. So the point of tonight is to go through the system. There's two presentations. One is from PSPRS, one is from Mr. Reader. They're going to show you where we are, what the prospects are for the future, and hopefully we'll come up with some direction in terms of what we want to do, because part of it is probably going to involve, and I'd say most likely going to involve, going to ballot in November to ask the voters to do some combination of some additional funding for the PSPRS unfunded liability, as well as to continue with our very successful streets and infrastructure program. So just, you know, just a word of background, this is nothing new. It's just gotten far worse in the last few years than it was before. It is a problem that I personally have been talking with Mr. Reader about for the last couple of years, actually longer, but the last two years specifically, in terms of the Bisbee issues. And so, you know, if you combine finding solutions to the issue that go along with needing to tap on sales tax revenue, which can only be decided once every two years by act of the state legislature a few years ago. The good news is that we've had time to think through solutions. The bad news is that the state legislature wouldn't let us do a special election to do what we need to do. We have to wait until the statutorily approved period of time, which is November of the even numbered year. So our opportunity is coming up this November. So we thought that this would be a really good point to have everybody get involved in the conversation and help bring some direction to this, that we know what we want to bring to the voters come November. So, and for those of you, many of you have already met Mark Reader. He works at STIFEL and Company, they've been financial advisors to the city now for something over 20 years, and have done other placements for us. On a personal note, he was also our financial advisor when I worked for the city of Winslow. And while I was there, he placed two bond issues for us there. So I know when he's being serious, and I know when he's trying to tell us a fast one. So we'll make sure he limits the fast ones and just sticks with the hard facts.
Hey, Mark, it's yours.
Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Parker, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. Thanks for having me down. I wanted to come down and have some one-on-one time with you. You know, this is a very important topic to your, to this council, to this community. We know that you're aware of the challenge, and we're here to help you with your challenge and trying to create some opportunities for you as well. So you're not alone in your liability. And we'll share with you here in a moment what we call your Tier One, Tier Two unfunded liability. And so I've got a separate presentation I'm going to walk you through. But what we thought we would do, we're going to try to move this along as quick as we can, but we want to also make sure that we educate properly. Pension, pension math and pensions are one of the more complicated subject matters you will probably deal with on the council. I deal with it every day, and I still sometimes, you know, don't feel like I know everything. But we're here to help, we're here to educate, and thought we would start off by introducing Clark Partridge. Can you see him? Clark, can you wave up there? You see the council? Clark Partridge works for PSPRS, Public Safety Pension and Retirement Plan. He's an employee of the plan that you're a member of. And Clark's been in about a year. And prior to that, Clark was the state controller, State of Arizona Controller, so has a lot of experience. So what we thought would make sense, and we've done this in the other communities that we're working with on this issue, is let Clark share with the city council a little more about PSPRS, a little more about the background, a little more about how we got into this predicament that your city's in, as well as our other cities around the state, from his perspective, and then share some new governance procedures they've implemented. And then give you an opportunity to ask Clark questions. And then when he's done, I'm going to walk you through a bond, a bond issue transaction to help maybe address the unfunded portion. So we'll start off with Clark, and then I'll, myself and my colleagues, go next. So Clark, I think you have a PowerPoint in front of you. It's the one with the pretty picture on the Bisbee. I think it's the other one, yeah.
So Clark, you have my PowerPoint there?
They do. And I don't know if you can bring it up or not.
He can share his screen if he would like.
Share your screen.
Can you show the screen, Clark?
I would be happy to do that. It says the host is disabled.
Uh, let me see. Let's see here. Hang on just a moment. Okay, are you able to now?
Yes, it looks like it. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, picture.
It's written on there.
It's not a very big picture, courtesy of Stephen. So thank you. Members of the city council and mayor, it's a pleasure to be with you. And as Mark said, and then Stephen and T. Duck very well, these are important decisions for you. And so our goal is to give you as much information as possible to help you make good informed decisions. And so anything that we can do to help assist in that, that's what we're here for. Start off, this is just an overview of the pension systems from a government perspective in the state of Arizona. The Arizona State Retirement System is the largest retirement system. That's one that most government employees and teachers participate in. You have the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, which is primarily law enforcement and firefighters. There's the Correctional Officer Retirement Plan and the Elected Official Retirement Plan. Those three plans we administer, they're different tiers and different types of setups with pension reform, and we'll get into that a little bit, to change some of those things. Phoenix and Tucson each have their own plan for most of their employees, but they do participate in PSPRS for police and fire. And Phoenix is our largest employer, and Tucson is among the largest. As Mark said, we're going to talk a little bit about the past, the present, and the future, what got us here, and where we're at right now, and then can get into some opportunities and looking forward. So how did we get here? There was a, in pension, when, back when the pension was first getting started and things, and into the system a little bit, they created a permanent benefit increase. At that time, the pensions were funded very well. Investment returns were consistently around, you know, 10%. And they were pretty even from year to year. So they instituted this permanent benefit increase where they took 50% of the investment returns above 9% and then gave them out as permanent benefit increases. And the way that they calculated that, they took the amount that was of half of the returns above 9%, and then they would divide that dollar amount by the number of retirees. So every retiree got the same dollar amount. Now, this had a disproportionate impact to rural areas, because typically costs are lower in rural areas, and so are salaries. So in rural areas, you would actually be, a retiree would get a higher percentage increase than with somebody in an urban area. So what that did is, over time, as that built up, it created larger and larger liabilities at a more accelerated rate than what was happening with urban areas. Now, everybody was impacted by this permanent benefit increase. It functioned fine for a while, but once you start getting volatility in interest returns from year to year, it started to not work well. And so you would have in the dot-com bubble back in 2000, 2001, you would have negative returns of sometimes double digits. And then the following year, you would have returns in double digits above. So what you've got is, you gave up 50% of the higher returns, above 9%, but you've got all of the actuarial losses that were below the assumed rate of return at the time. So our assumed rate of return is 7.3%. If you get less than that, because that's what the liability is discounted at, then that's an actuarial loss. Even if it's a 5% positive return, it's an actuarial loss of 2.3%. So that was the type of thing that was going on. And those funded ratios kept declining year over year. And that happened for, and SPPI was going on for 28 years before pension reform, and then a couple of years as it was being implemented. So when that was recognized, the legislature first in 2011 tried to fix it. The courts came in and said, it's constitutionally protected benefit. You don't have the authority to make those changes. So then they went back out with propositions to the people and asked the voters to pass Props 124 and 125. 124 was for PSPRS, and 125 was for the Correctional Officer Retirement Plan. And it eliminated the PBI. And the PBI caused 80% of the problem system-wide. So that was the big target. So when the PBI was eliminated, that stopped the hole from being dug deeper. But it did not resolve the unfunded liability that existed. So we still have to fill the hole. So that's kind of what we're talking about here with you now. It replaced the PBI with a new cost of living adjustment that was capped at 2% per year. So that's a lot more manageable and limits the additional liability that can come into play. So that was a very good and more predictable and manageable outcome than what the PBI was. Also, we've had new actuaries, new assumption changes, change in investment and staff, and also other staff, and also the asset allocation. So we'll go into those in a little bit more detail. So Mike Townsend, the current administrator of the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, began in December of 2019. These are just some of the things that he has been involved with implementing since he came on board. Implemented a new general ledger system and accounting system. They were really tracking things on spreadsheets, and that really was not probably the level of an accounting system that needed to exist to be able to help track things. So they replaced the general ledger system. Hired new auditors, Clinton Larson Allen, they're known nationwide as having some pension expertise. So bringing that to the table. Hired new leadership positions. He hired Mike Smerek as the Deputy Administrator. Mike was my deputy state comptroller for over 13 years. I would trust Mike Smerek with my life. His Chief Financial Officer, John Mormon, that's who I report to now. John actually worked for me back in the General Accounting Office when he was over all the internal audit for the state of Arizona. He was also the Controller for Access, who administers the state's Medicaid program for about 20 years. So the Controller, Jack Jordan, came from the General Accounting Office. He negotiated with the federal government on a number of issues and advised state agents on setting up all their cost allocation structures and systems, which are fairly complex. So very sharp, the internal auditor has come from the city of Scottsdale. So a lot of expertise has come in. When Mike Townsend came on board, he said he was the only CPA on staff in the finance area. Now there's six CPAs on staff. So tremendous change in the expertise from a financial perspective. The actuaries brought in, and they created modelers for each of our pension systems. The modeler is a tool that helps you look and be directly correct. It ties into the actuarial valuations themselves and leverages that information to be able to help you point in the right direction and simulate certain things that are going, it's not going to guarantee an outcome or anything, because there are so many assumption changes and things that can come up. But it's a really good useful tool to give you an idea of kind of the impact some of the things that you're planning might have. IT security upgrades, we all know that we need to keep up with those because of the cyber risk investment opportunities. They really have changed the strategic asset allocation. That drives about 90 to 92% of the investment return. You can't control the market when it goes up and down, but you can invest in the types of securities that give you a type of return relative to your risk appetite in relation to the market. So if the market goes down, you can invest in a portfolio that doesn't have the market. You don't lose as much as the market. And that's what we've been experiencing lately in January and into February, was along the market, like the S&amp;P 500, et cetera, was losing money. Our portfolio went down, but we're still more positive than the S&amp;P 500, for example. But it also allows you to capture most of the upside potential. So you may not get 100% of the upside of an S&amp;P 500, but overall, you're going to be lower on the, in the downturns, you're going to have a lower downside, and you're going to have a higher upside relative each to other. And that's how you manage the volatility in the market, be able to protect the downside, but capture the upside gains. The Board has also adopted actuarial changes. They eliminated negative amortization. Negative amortization, there's a payroll growth assumption out there that assumes that payroll, your payroll is increasing at 3.5% per year. Well, if you're not giving 3.5% pay increases per year, what that creates is a situation where it's akin to if you had a mortgage and you weren't making as much of a payment as the interest. And so it was actually creating more principal every single month, and you were falling behind rather than making progress. So the Board is changing and phasing that out, because it was having this negative amortization change. That will be completed over the next few years. But what that does is essentially allows you to go and start making more progress towards your unfunded liability payments and actually keep things moving in a positive direction. The Advisory Committee was created during pension reform. It was a requirement, it's in law. But it's also very active and very strategic, and it cheapens very heavily. In fact, they meet almost on a monthly basis, and they provide feedback to the Board, as well as take things from the Board and from the staff and go out, and there's a sounding board, and they're tied in. The League of Cities and Towns, obviously, and the County Supervisors Association, the Fire District Association, those are all part of that. And they have good dialogue and how is this going to work from everybody's perspectives. And so trying to make things win-win as much as we possibly can in reviewing options or making progress and improvements. So let's go through really quick what the defined benefit is. The benefit is set and calculated in accordance with statute. And then this is just one example of how that works. In our example, we're going to take a Tier One employee with 25 years of service. If they have 25 years of service as a Tier One employee, their multiplier is 62.5% per law. So you take that, that multiplier, times the average compensation. In this case, we've used $80,000 as the average compensation. And that would give you a $50,000 annual pension for the retiree, the retired, with that scenario. So that just shows you the math and how that's calculated in accordance with statute. Now let's talk a little bit about the estimated liability. The estimated liability, what the actuary does when they come in is they look at, they project all the estimated payments that are going to be made on end of the future, and they discount those cash flows to a present value using the assumed rate of return of 7.3%, okay? And they use a boatload of actuarial assumptions, like how long is somebody going to live? They use the census information, which is what the current salaries are, and they project out what the likely pay increases are going to be and what their salary is going to be on retirement. If you're going to have disabilities or not, what's the likelihood of that? Your own experience could be better or worse than that, right? So there's a lot of things that go into it. And what we do know is that it's going to change a year from now. Because just like when we planned for our own retirement, things change over time. Interest rates change, interest rates go up or down. And healthcare costs go up and down, et cetera, housing costs go up and down. So when we're planning for our own retirement, we always have to be continually going back and revisiting what is, how are we, are we on target, are we on course? It's the same with retirement systems. Here, we will go in, and every year, there's an actuarial valuation. And every year, that's updated, and that's going to give you a better estimate of where your pension liability is going to be going forward. Let's talk a little bit more about the unfunded liability and how that's calculated. The actuarial valuation is done every June 30th, like this stat, and is the assets and their value as of that day. And then that's compared to the liabilities as of that same date. And the difference between those two is essentially the unfunded liability. If the assets are greater than the liabilities, well, then you're overfunded, and there is no unfunded liability. But if the liability is greater than the assets, that's what creates that unfunded situation. So on to the next page. This is another way to look at your funded status. And often it's displayed in a funded percentage or funded ratio, is what they call it. So if you take your planned assets divided by the liabilities, that gives you your funded ratio. If the assets are greater than the liabilities, then your ratio is over 100%. If your liabilities are greater than the assets, then it's going to be less than 100%. And the goal is to be at or around 100% funded. That's akin to if you were running a marathon, because again, you're funding these pensions over employees' lifetimes and over the course of their retirement. Those payments are going to be paid out. So it's over 20, 30, 40-year timeframes, right? That this is going on and even beyond. So what's, and there's a lot of things that can change over that timeframe. So that's why it's important to true this up essentially and do a new estimate every single year. But the goal of 100% is like if you're running a marathon at the one-mile mark or the five-mile mark, what's your time? Are you ahead of pace or behind pace? Do you need to catch up a little bit to where you want to finish? What's your time and your goal is? And so that's kind of that gives you that perspective at that point in time, where are you? That does not mean that you're guaranteed that you're going to finish the race in a certain time, whether you're behind or ahead at that point in the race of where you want to be. But that's just a gut check to let you take stock of where you're at. But if you do have an unfunded liability, part of pension reform requires that you disclose that on your website. And then the law has also been changed to require you to report that to us. What is your plan to take care of that unfunded liability? This is another way to look at this that will help you understand how these things go together. The bottom bar is the present value of future benefits. That's what the actuaries do, and they take all those future cash flows, and they discount that at 7.3%. That gives you the present value today of those future benefits. Another way to look at it is if you had that much in cash and we earned 7.3% going forward into the future, you would have enough to take care of the estimated benefit payouts that are expected to be paid out throughout an individual's estimated lifetime. The actuarial accrued liability, the next bar, is the portion of that present value benefits that had been earned by employees up through June 30th, the actuarial valuation date. And then the difference between that is the normal, the future normal costs that are going to be earned by your employees into the future. And that's what you pay in normal cost to be able to cover that portion so that you've got enough assets that by the time that person retires, you would essentially have enough to be able to earn the investment returns and then make the payments. And again, all this is in theory, because reality differs than what the expectations and these estimates are. But then you have the assets. If the assets are less than the actual accrued actuarial valuation at June 30th, then that creates an unfunded actuarial accrued liability. So that's where, again, if, in using the marathon analogy, that if you're behind time, you not only have to run the race that you had planned, but you also have to try to catch up and make up that time that you're behind. but you also have to try to catch up and make up that time that you're behind a little bit. And so that's the piece that is going, being amortized and spread over, uh, uh, extended period of time to allow you to make up that difference. Going on to the next thing, this is a fundamental, uh, equation and, and principle in all pensions. This is the standard pension funding equation. Where the money comes from is on the left side. It comes, the money comes from contributions and investment income. That's, that's the sources. On the right is where the money goes, the benefits and then the expenses to run the plan. Now by having a, uh, a pooled plan from an expense perspective, your, that keep, helps keep costs down far more than if you tried to do that yourself and pay all those costs and, and hire the staff for investments, et cetera, all on your own. So the largest part of, uh, number of the equation is the benefits normally. But in your case, you've also got a situation where you don't have very many assets. So the investment income is not very, is not making a lot of investment returns because you just don't have enough assets. So you're having to make up a lot more in contributions than what would be original, uh, the standard type of a pension design. Because you've got that additional large unfunded liability amortization rate that you've got to make. So that's essentially, uh, gives you a snapshot of what, uh, the pension equation is. Now we're going to go through this and help you understand your specific situations and things a little bit more. But before we do that, understand that some people say, well, this is a pension liability, it's not really debt. It is debt, it's, it's, in fact, it's constitutionally protected debt. Um, and if you look at your own financial statements, one of the largest liabilities, if not probably the largest liability, is going to be your pension liability. And so you can look at it on your financial statements. And so if you would decide, and it certainly is up to you as to, if you would go out, as Stephen talked about, that possibility of, of going to the voters and, and going out to the markets and, and doing a borrowing and the timing of that, you would be, essentially be exchanging a debt for a debt. There are different types of debt a little bit. But, you know, you have to make the best decisions that you can and the best decisions for your citizens. And that's kind of where you're at. But keep in mind that every dollar that you contribute towards our retirement, just like in our own individual retirement plans, can earn investment returns. Sometimes they're higher and sometimes they're lower as those investment returns go up and down. But every dollar that you don't put aside for, for those investment earnings is a lost opportunity as well. And then you've got to make that ground up through additional contributions, whether it's our own retirement. Because if we didn't start saving for retirement until five years before retirement, we've got a lot of ground to make up with additional contributions because we haven't been earning investment returns for maybe twenty-five or thirty years leading up to that point. So where does the money come from? This is a snapshot of the retirement system of, as a whole. About seventeen percent of the money comes from employee contributions. Employer contributions make up thirty-eight percent. And then investment income makes up about forty-five percent on average. This gives you a snapshot of what was happening before and after pension reform. So you can see where the funded status, and if we went further out to the left, you would see that that funded status originally was up, over a hundred percent, but it was declining with pension reform as that PB, with the volatility of interest rates, especially since two thousand, were eating away at the funded status of, of the pensions. And it kept going down, 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 down until pension reform happened for PSPR asset in two thousand and sixteen. And what happened in two thousand and sixteen? It leveled off. So it stopped going down. Again, we stopped digging the hole deeper, but now we have to fill the hole. Here's, uh, a snapshot of where you stand in relation to other pensions as far as funded status goes. You can see that you're in the, the bottom tier here. That of the three plans, uh, you're, 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 one of those is yours. And I think the one in the ten percent is the, the police plan, the lower end of, of that. So you've got two of the bottom, uh, five plans from a funded status perspective. Here's the contribution rates. You can see where, well, that, kind of like as the, as the funded ratios were going down, the unfunded liabilities were getting larger, which required more and more, larger and larger unfunded liability amortization contribution rate. So you can see that the contribution rates, again, this is on the system as a whole, the contribution rates were going up, 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 up until pension reform happened. Now pension reform happened in two thousand and sixteen. But keep in mind that the two thousand and sixteen actuarial valuation at June thirty sixteen is what sets the contribution rate for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. So that's why you can see it leveled off with two thousand and eighteen is because that's when pension reform contribution rates kicked in. And again, you can see that those contribution rates have essentially leveled off. Here's your contribution rates in relation to other employers. You, for Bisbee Fire, you can see that it's in that seventy-five to eighty percent range is your employer contribution rates. Now you can see that there are more employers above your contribution rates than what you are. That's because your unfunded, uh, liability amortization is being amortized over a longer period of time. So that portion is lower than some of these employers are amortizing that over a fifteen year period of time. So the, uh, they're paying a little bit higher amortization because it's over a shorter period of time. So now let's look at some specific numbers, uh, for you. This is going to come from the fire plan. The police plan, plan, plan would use the same math as the fire plan. So you'll be able to give that. And then the funded status of the police plan is just a little bit better than the fire plan. So I picked this one to kind of give you that worst case scenario that you're, you're kind of dealing with here. And that is that, uh, here's your li, your liabilities as of June thirty twenty-one, where you have a liability of twelve million. The unfunded liability is eleven point four million of that. Uh, approximately twelve, uh, million. So you had four hundred, five hundred and forty-one thousand, one seventy-five in assets as of that date. Okay? Now, again, when we go back to that, uh, the pension equation and, and what we're doing is if you're earning, uh, the expected rate of return of seven point three percent, now the actual earnings go up and down. In fiscal year twenty, our return was only point nine one percent, so just under one percent. But last year it was twenty-seven point, uh, uh, seven eight percent, twenty-seven point eight percent. But the problem with either of those, whether it was point one percent or twenty-seven, over twenty-seven percent, if you only have a half a million in assets, you just don't get much in investment returns on, in either situation. So even though that you, we had record years last year, you just didn't get that much in investment return. If you were a hundred percent funded, kind of on pace, you would have gotten investment returns on eleven point nine million in assets. So you can just imagine that if you had over twenty-five percent in investment returns on almost twelve million dollars in assets, you essentially would have received, uh, twenty-five percent of twelve is three million dollars in investment returns. But if you had a fourth of point five percent, you only got investment returns of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Right? Because you can't earn investment on assets that aren't there. So that's really all we're trying to get there. And just regardless, the, the, the other thing to keep in mind that that future liability is being discounted seven point three percent. It's going to be discounted one less year, which means that liability is going to grow. And we're going to show you a couple of things here to help point that out. This is just calculating the investment return at, uh, uh, seven point three percent. So this obviously is less than the twenty-seven point, uh, eight percent we had last year. But this is taking the current balance at the beginning of the year, the five hundred and forty-one thousand, the seven point three percent on that, plus the contributions that you're scheduled to make, is projecting an ending balance at the end of this fiscal year of just under one point four million. You're made, that's an increase of eight hundred and twenty-nine, almost eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the, what it was at the beginning of the year. But the liability is also, as I said, going to be discounted one less year. So the liability at twenty twenty-one is eleven point nine. It's estimated to be, as it grows seven point three percent, about approximately twelve point eight at the end of this year. So you can see that the liability is growing faster than what your, uh, contributions and investment returns are. So that's, gives you a snapshot of why you're having that negative arbitrage where you're making these payments, but it's almost like as you make the payments, the hole's getting a little bit deeper for you because you just don't have enough in assets to generate a return and to get through that. Plus you've got that payroll growth assumption headwind that's still being worked out. There's a headwind, uh, working against you as well. So this is comparing the two years. The one on the left is the, the graph, the bar chart that we saw before of the liabilities and, and the, uh, a, assets. And now this is what the estimates are for twenty twenty-two. You can see that the liability grows, but also the unfunded liability is growing. Now your assets grew, which is this gray bar at the bottom, but didn't grow as much as the increase in the total liability here. Okay? So this is a snapshot of your contributions. And the investments are earning about six percent. The employee contributions are about nine percent. The, the normal cost portion of the employer contributions is about fifteen percent. And then seventy percent of the money is coming from the unfunded liability amortization contribution rate that you're doing. Now if you could fully fund, this is what your pie chart would look like. Approximately eighty-six percent would come from investments. Five percent would come from employees. And then nine percent would come from you as the employer. And obviously you would eliminate that unfunded liability because you're a hundred percent funded. So now let's go back to the pension equation. I think this will make a little bit more sense to you now. We kind of went through that, we did a deeper dive and now coming back up. That you can see that when you don't have enough assets, investment return, and once your funding percentage gets lower than probably about seventy percent, you, there's just no way that you can generate the investment returns, uh, by themselves without making, uh, some additional large contributions. But another thing to point out, a couple of points. One is that Mike Council asked the actuaries to calculate, at that point in time when he came on board, for most employers, they still had seventeen years left in their amortization schedule. So he said, if they put in one million dollars, what would that save taxpayers over the seventeen years? And what they came back with is they said, it's going to save an estimated one point eight million dollars and you still have that one million dollars in the fund continuing to earn additional interest from that perspective. So that's just the power of compounding interest and, uh, the importance of having assets set aside for retirement to help earn the investment return. So that lowers your contributions. Otherwise, those contributions are just going to keep going up, 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 up. And that's going to put a lot of strain on your budget. The continued diligence, this is probably the most important thing I can tell you today. This is not a set it and forget it. This is, there's investment return risk. We know that, with the assumed rate of return is seven point three percent, but very rarely, if ever, are we going to hit seven point three percent. It's going to be higher or it's going to be lower. We're actually averaging a little higher than, uh, seven point three percent over the seven and ten year timeframe. Over the twenty year timeframe, we're actually lower than the seven point three percent because we've got the dot com bubble, the, um, uh, great recession and the COVID downturn. All of those years are all in that, which are the three biggest economic downturns since, uh, the Great Depression are all in the same twenty years. So that's why it's less than. But then when you look at the thirty year, it goes back up a little bit and it, and it more closely approximates. Still has all those same three cataclysmic events in it, but it spreads it out a little bit more, uh, so that you don't get quite such a concentration of the, the three, uh, largest, uh, downturn events. But they're still in the, you know, five, uh, point six eight to six point, uh, six three type of range, the twenty year and the thirty year. So again, let's go back and just visit this. We're just going to throw up your numbers. Uh, your present value benefits is thirteen point three million. That actuarial accrued liability is eleven point nine million. And then your assets, of course, is five hundred and forty-one thousand and change. Here's a snapshot of the investment returns. I talked about this a little bit, but you can see that these are net of fee numbers. Uh, the returns are all time high last year. Part of that was a rebound from the COVID downturn. But part of it was, was good, uh, growth in the economy as well. Uh, the ten year is seven point eight. So I just put that up there a little bit bigger. You can, the seven year is seven point nine. But even though these numbers are good, I would cut, you know, at the, especially the, the fiscal year, the, uh, three year and the five year, twenty-seven point eight, ten point eight, ten point three, I would suggest, don't focus on those. Always look at the seven, ten, twenty, thirty years in section to date numbers. When we invest, we invest for the long term. We know there's going to be ups and downs. We do not tie in the markets. Uh, we can manage a little bit and it's not like we, we don't just ignore the market ups and downs. But we don't invest today thinking that we hit the lowest point of the market. We're all, we put all the money on black, hoping that that comes up, right? We invest, uh, uh, by mitigating risk and making sure and, and investing for the long term. And with that, I will try to answer any other questions that you may have. And, uh, we can have a discussion.
Counsel, do you have questions?
Yeah.
Dale, go ahead, Dale.
I mean, this took a long time for this, for us to be here. And, um, I can see some of the reasons because of the changes of the way we did, uh, accounting. But if I look at different employers, different cities, why did we, I mean, we must have done something wrong that we need to learn from? Why are we in such a bad shape? Why are we at the bottom here? Uh, just saying because of the changes of accounting? No, I think we have a problem. Uh, we have our financial advisor here that has been advising us for twenty years. I would like to hear from him, why, why are we here? I mean, without going, you know, saying there was some changes in the way, some other entities, some other employers have done a great job, much better than what, what we have done. And here we found ourselves at the bottom and we're trying to find a solution by kicking the can. Uh, I'd rather, I'd rather hear what was done wrong? What was, what did we do wrong so we can fix this? Uh, this, the question maybe can be answered by the presenter or by the financial advisor that we've had for twenty years.
I'll take a stab at it and then Mark can do a little bit of commentary. There, there's, a lot of the things that we've talked about are the global. Everybody suffered to a certain point and everybody shared the same factors. Again, as I talked about, the PBI is far bigger and has a far bigger effect on rural communities. And in your case, you're probably at the extreme example of the differential between ru, rural and urban, uh, salary differential. So that was magnified more for you probably than, than a lot, even other rural areas in Arizona. Now, so that's one thing. Another thing is, is that at least on the fireside, this question came up and, and we did an analysis. And, uh, this was before I got And this was before I got there. I didn't do the analysis, but they looked at it back in, I think, 2017, just after pension reform because the same question, very good question, was asked. And what they came back with, and it was focused on the fire side, but there's three other things that that they cited. Again, the PBI was accentuated for you. You had some disabilities that occurred that were more than what other people experienced. And which would cause your liabilities to go up quite a bit because they're going to be receiving that disability pension for a lot longer than what they otherwise would have been receiving it, and it would have kicked in a lot earlier in the process as well. So and and you weren't planning for that large of a disability liability. So it kind of all of a sudden gets sprung on you once that that, those larger-than-expected disabilities actually occur. The other thing is, is probably the economy down in Mesbby because you, you have more retirees than you have active employees. In other areas, that's reversed. So you have, your, your payroll base is paying for a larger payroll liability in proportion to its size. So that is also creating the, the, the situation where you've got a larger unfunded liability relative to what you would if it was funded. So those were kind of the snapshots at the high level that really differentiated you from the rest of a lot of other people. But there are urban areas like Phoenix, their, their funded ratios are only about thirty percent. So and they have, obviously, much bigger than than you are in things. So they, they have problems too. Just because they're in an urban area does not mean that they do not have problems and that they're, they're below the, and they're, in fact, they're one of the ones that are bringing down the overall PSPRS averages because they're such a large percentage and they're lower funded than most.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to take a stab at it.
I'm going to too.
Adding to what Clark was just telling us because his boss, Mike Townsend, last week shared with me an analysis that was done, and Clark referred to it a few, a little while ago, that I had never seen before last week. And Clark, I'm going to assume that's a public document because I may have to share that with counsel.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, great. So, you know, you talked about the PBI or the permanent benefit increase, which no longer exists. That analysis took place between 2000 and 2016. And the, the entire time, and for many years before that, both police and fire had more retired members than active members, okay? So basically, fewer people were funding pensions for more people than they were. So that's one of the factors. Another factor, this is really interesting, only because it's so devastating, is we, and I don't know if we currently have, but in 2017, we had four disabled pensioners, okay? The statistics on those four disabilities are, the aggregate contribution made by those four, four disabled retirees into the system during their time here was fifty thousand dollars, plus or minus. Over a thirty-year period, they have been paid out of the system two point five million dollars. Okay? Think about that, okay? So, I mean, now, it's, it's, it's important to understand how we got to where we are. It's also important to understand that nobody pushed a button or pulled a trigger that we can point a finger up and say, here she did it. This is compounded over a very long period of time in a pension system that, quite frankly, okay? This is Steve Pocken's opinion, but I, I know a lot of people agree with me. A pension system that was doomed to failure over a fifty-year period and was particularly devastating in the rural fire and rural police departments. Now, one other distinction we have to make that separates us from other small-town rural fire departments. We have twenty-one full-time firefighters. We're authorized to have twenty-one full-time firefighters, okay? You, you won't find another fire department in a town of less than five thousand that has full-time firefighters, too many consequences. So, and when you look at the culture, because the culture's important here. Sixteen years ago, when I first started working here, every firefighter and almost every police officer was born here, was raised here, went to high school here, had a job here. Most of them never left, and they ended up retiring from here, okay? That strains the system. It's, it's a wonderful thing to have, because every community wants that, okay? But when you're a member of PSPRS, that actually hurts us in the system because those people retire after a long career here. But because they, they, they never left, they stay here, they, they're able to get a pension after twenty-five, twenty, well, it was twenty years, now twenty-five. And so they're going to live another twenty or thirty years, maybe forty years, and continue to draw a pension check, which is up to twice the amount of time that they were contributing to the pension system. All of those factors are what caused this to occur.
If I have a follow-up. My question is, so we come all here in the public and here, why, why didn't we make decision? We saw ourselves ready to fall off a cliff. Why wasn't some financial decision, planning differently, looking at this and evaluating, rather just knowing? Because from what I've heard over the years, yeah, we know we're going to fall off a cliff. Why, why did we wait so long? Why didn't we take some action? You know, look at sources, but I mean, what, what it took so, so long?
I'll, I'll take that one, okay? From back in 2007 to 2014, when I was on council, I'll give you the letter I wrote and read to counsel about, I called the freight train coming out of the tunnel, and we see the headlights, but we're not getting out of the way. Now, eight years ago, when we passed a one percent, a couple of us on council said, we need to start paying down this debt, and some of it needs to go to that because this freight train's going to run us over, okay? Well, we didn't have the support of the rest of the council. So what happened, to be quite honest? We had a mayor, and we had other council members that said, no, you will not get any dime towards pension. In fact, after that, the mayor convinced the council to vote to extend the number of years that we are in debt. I wanted to ask that actually, of my, didn't, didn't we extend the number of years versus some of the other departments? We're now on a thirty-year payoff, or is it, I forget?
Yeah, at, at the time of pension reform, you had the opportunity to select a fifteen-year amortization. That was where most people were. You could also select a longer period of time, which, again, is, it's just like a thirty-year mortgage versus a fifteen-year mortgage. You're going to pay more in interest in a thirty-year mortgage than you are a fifteen-year mortgage. The town selected, they, they chose to go the thirty-year route. That's now down to twenty-five now because we're five years later, right? But you're amortizing that liability over a longer period of time, so you're not getting the assets in as quickly. So it's going to, you're not getting the investment returns to help take care of that liability. And, and, and the contributions would also be higher in a fifteen-year situation.
The shorter time for the mortgage, yeah?
So, so, yeah, so let, let me just finish it up. And, yeah, it's, it's been facing this, this, this town, this council, mayor and council for years. And I, one reason I ran for mayor is because I wanted something done on this, and I wanted to take it to the voters and sell it to the voters. And that's why I'm trying to get you all to, to see where we're at. And, and one reason I, Steve has, we've all been working on this the last few months to, to really get ourselves a handle on it. So, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of come to the Jesus moment, okay? We, as a town, need to decide, are we going to start taking care of the responsibility that we have taken on as a, as a town to our retirees? Or are we going to just keep kicking the can down the road? So, that's, okay.
I kind of want something clarified publicly, and it was kind of hit on. I've had a few people over time in the last few months say, then why don't we just get rid of the police and fire? And it's like, okay, if we do that, we still have to pay for the, it's a retirement. And a lot of people don't understand that because it's this assumption that if we get rid of our police and fire and just go to volunteer or whatever, then it's gone. So if we could just reiterate that, please, and explain that to the public that it doesn't matter what, we are obligated. This is a retirement, our pension plan.
It's a debt.
And thank you, yeah.
And even worse, you won't have any contributions from police officers and firefighters to help pay for it.
Because that, that's not being realized. That didn't exist.
It will get worse.
So my second, my second part to that is, so currently, any new hires are now under a different tier that is not going to cause us grief like this one that we're talking about, correct?
Well, we should hope not.
Time will tell.
In a, yeah.
I, I don't want to.
In a Walgreens world.
I don't have that crystal ball.
Yeah.
There's several things in your pension system, but I, I retired out of a pension, pension system, and I'm actually was on the advisory council of the Utah State Retirement System. We don't count overtime. We don't count a lot of things like drop plans, none of those, and it's a lot different situation. So even with the reforms, we still, but the main thing we're going to look at right now is the tier one, tier two that's killing us right now. So, and, and if you look, you'll get into this, I'm sure with Mark, the long term is, is just getting uglier and uglier, and there's, to a point that, anyway, we'll, we'll get to that, so.
And that's the reason I'm bringing this up. We need to face it up. The public need to know, and we need to deal with it. We can't just keep kicking the can down the road. And that's, that's the bottom line.
Kind of how we got here, so. Doing the same thing over and over doesn't solve it.
No, it doesn't solve it.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what, what, just to your point, I believe, that you made is, as you explain this to the voters, you can't avoid this liability by just eliminating the police and fire. No different than if you had a mortgage on the house, that you can just get out of the mortgage on the house by moving out of the house. You know, you have those liabilities, they're real liabilities, they're obligations that you have. You're going to have them whether you live in the house or whether you move out of the house.
All right, thank you so much. Great presentation, sound and.
Don't, don't go away.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Well, thank you. I, I really appreciate the passion on the city council here. And it's a combination of things that resulted in a significant unfunded tier one, what we call tier one, tier two unfunded liability for the city of Mesbby. It's a potpourri of all the items we discussed. It's very interesting, isn't it? All the different things that have happened. The PBI, the permanent benefit increase. Most pension funds, my dad, my dad retired from Greyhound. He's blessed to have a pension. And he has his pension, and he gets a cost of living adjustment, and it's two or three percent a year. Well, that wasn't good enough. When they went back and got that PBI through the legislative process back in 2000, and I keep forgetting the year, Steve, 2000, I think it was, okay? So they gave them that PBI, which gave the retirees, not a COLA, but fifty percent of the returns over nine percent. That, I think, started a lot of this. And that incentivized the pension fund back then to take on more risk. Went to Wall Street, took on more risk, and they had a problem. The whole states, the whole states behind it is in trouble, if you will, or has this challenge. And it's been something that I, as a practitioner, I've been doing this for thirty years, running around the state of Arizona, working with all small, median, and large cities all across the state that we've been communicating to our city councils and our staffs, you've got to do something about this unfunded pension. Okay? And one of the things I'm very proud of over the last couple of years is that we've all elevated the public policy conversation exactly to what we're doing tonight with passionate city council members and city staff members that said, it's time to fix it, okay? So I just want to kind of give you that introduction. It's a potpourri of things, and I really appreciate Clark being here from the pension fund. My colleagues work around the country, and I guess they, they don't have the opportunity to even communicate with the pension fund sometimes, if you believe that. I'm not sure of the mayor, the way it was in Nevada. But prior to Mike's arrival, there wasn't a lot of communication. And the cool thing is, the neat thing now is everybody's talking, so that's, that's good news. Okay? So I'm going to walk you through, I'm going, mine's going to be a little simpler. And again, I want to thank the council for your leadership, and I want to thank staff for your leadership on this. It's a complicated subject matter, and you guys were very patient. And we appreciate you bearing to this as we continue to educate us. Okay, so let's, you all have my book, right?
Our book.
Let's go to page two, left-hand corner. And Clark touched on some of this, but if you go to page two, on the right-hand side, bottom right-hand side, your pension, unfunded pension liability, we estimate as of today is twenty, I'm going to round if you don't mind, twenty-two ninety. It is by far the largest liability you have at your city. Your city does not have a lot of debt. You've done a pretty good job of that, by the way. You've done a very good job of not, you've got some, you've got some utility debt. But, you know, utilities are expensive, and it's not much, so you've done a really good job. All righty, so we wanted to kind of give you that number. Clark went over it. Let's go to page three. And, you know, I don't know if Clark can maybe give this up on screen or not, but I'm going to probably just talk to you from here. So, again, some of this is a repeat, but go to the right-hand side. You see where it says fire? This is kind of the magnitude of the challenge. The AAL is your present value of those liabilities, so those actuaries, right? These people, all they do is calculate numbers. They know who your retirees are. They do a projection of all the benefits that you have to pay our retirees based on what? Longevity? And, you know, people are living longer, right? That's another, throw that in the pot. We got investment returns. People are living longer. It's good for humankind, but it's not good for pensions. Okay, so let's round. The actuaries are telling us as of June 30, 2021, you have twelve million dollars of future value of liabilities based on today's dollars. Fair? You have five hundred and forty thousand dollars in the account at AS, at PSPRS. Those are your assets. Okay? You're eleven point four million unfunded. So you're trying to take care of eleven point four million on five hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's completely upside down. And your funding ratio is only four and a half percent. Okay, that's, that's our fire department. You're a little better off on police. You go to the right-hand corner, again, eleven million of liabilities. You got about one point one million with Clark at PSPRS that they put to work. We're ten million unfunded, that's what the UAL stands for on this vernacular that we use. So that fund is separate funds, responsible for their own separate liabilities for our police and our fire folks, okay? Your actuarial return is seven point three percent, so you're earning about seven point three percent on your money. And those are your funding ratios. And as we talked about, and as you're aware, extremely low. If you go on the left-hand side, you're in the bottom quartile around the country, okay? Now, the PSPRS average is fifty-five percent. This gets back to what we talked about earlier. Other people are in the, have similar challenges. Some are more funded than others. You're at the lower end, and it's all over the spectrum, okay? Last year, the state average was forty-four percent. They had a good year, they had a twenty-seven percent, we got it up to fifty-five percent. So I wanted to use this slide to kind of give you an overview of your assets and your liabilities and your funding ratio, okay? All right, now let's go to page four. Again, a lot of math here. So we're only talking about the unfunded portion of your liability, right? Which is this tier one, tier two. That's what we just went over. And if you go to the right-hand side, in order to pay back that liability over time, you've entered into an amortization schedule with PSPRS. And we got in the red line there where it says total UAL amortization. Those are the. Those are the budget implications if you do nothing at all going forward. We know you're going into your budget season right now, if the city decides not to do anything, those are your minimum contributions, if you will, that you have to pay. And the city elected to do a long thirty-year amortization at the time, right now it ends in two thousand and forty-eight. See that? So we're twenty-two, that's twenty-six years-ish, twenty-five, twenty-six years. And you can see the implications on your budget going forward, we graphed it on the left-hand side, and that your, your payments will go, if we use, uh, next year's budget, uh, one point three, you're gonna go to two point, almost two point eight million. And it's more than likely gonna grow because your asset base is so low. Care on that? Okay. So this is the do nothing at all scenario, uh, that we wanna walk you through, that we're all trying to fix together. Okay, uh, page five, we, uh, we put this slide together for staff, and we, you know, I think, again, we've been having almost weekly calls with staff, and really getting up to speed and, and preparing for this meeting with council and subsequent meetings. So this low funding ratio, there's lots of implications, and Clark touched on these, about not being able to participate in a good year, right? Like we have this year, and the other implications here. Escalating annual costs, and you're gonna, you're, you're crowding out general fund dollars. Uh, your general fund is sacred to your community for all the services you provide. And we gotta get this thing off the books as soon as we can. Okay? All right, so then, uh, on page six, as we get in the rooms with our city councils to last two years on this subject matter, what are our options? And there's really no easy option, right? When you have an unfunded liability like this. And one of the problems over the years, as I pounded the drum, is that they haven't had the budget capacity or the political will to address it. Fair? It's a difficult decision. Generally, our budgets are tight, and there hasn't been an active appetite politically to raise taxes, whether it be property taxes or sales taxes across the state. Uh, and they don't wanna go to voters for that, there hasn't been a real big appetite for that. So we've kind of kicked the can down the road across the state. Uh, and so the do nothing scenario is gonna be probably not in our city's best interest, that's what's been going on. Uh, option number two, uh, and some cities have been trying to do this, is they've been trying to throw additional contributions at the unfunded. Remember that formula? Contributions plus investment income equals benefits and expenses to run the, the fund. So some of our cities have thrown some extra contributions in over the years. Uh, if you go over here to the right-hand side, I think Steve or Carrie may have mentioned this to you, the city of Prescott was one of the few cities, uh, that passed a point seven five percent sales tax dedicated solely to the extinguishment of tier one, tier two PSPRS liability. And their voters passed it. Now, you remember the horrible incident, remember the horrible incident, the fire up there several years ago? The, the very unfortunate incident, you know, and, and the people had soft hearts, and the timing was good, and it's a conservative city, too, that passed it. And it stays on the book, and it sunsets when they're ninety-five percent funded. And they're crushing it now because, you know, COVID's been good on, good for our economy, you know, good for our general funds, and they're probably gonna be ninety-five percent funded way sooner than they thought they were. So just to give you an example, that's how they developed a dedicated revenue stream only to go to PSPRS, okay? So we've seen a little bit of this. Um, and, and, and Bisbee, you know, Steve talked about this a little bit. This may be something we wanna consider for your city. You're a chartered city, you have to go to the voters, um, and you know you have a half cent sales tax, sun setting soon for streets, right?
One cent.
Sorry, one, one percent. Uh, I'm not trying to take revenue away from you over there.
It's hard enough.
Uh, and so you're preparing to go back to the voters, of course, to hopefully have that reapproved and maybe reallocated, you know, depending upon how we wanna reallocate the, it's about nine hundred thousand, as I understand it, a year. So, you know, you're kind of headed down that direction. And we're gonna show you some scenarios where if you can get a dedicated revenue stream to throw at PSPRS, I'll show you some scenarios you want, you may like, you may not. Okay? And then the third option is this, uh, refinancing, uh, opportunity I wanna walk, we're gonna walk you through, where essentially, we would, uh, the city of Bisbee would issue bonds, and probably in the public markets. Uh, and, you know, rates are, are floating up now, so, you know, we're losing a little bit of ground here, bear with us. Uh, and the city would issue bonds, take the bond money, and wire it to PSPRS, okay? Twenty-two million. At which time you're what, a hundred percent funded, or eighty or ninety, whatever we decide to do. And then we take care of that liability, and then we gotta replace it with a bond paper. And then we gotta compare the two, and we gotta see what makes sense. Okay. So I'm gonna pause for a few minutes, I know that was a lot. Uh, hoping that's helpful. So let me pause before I get into some other numbers here, 'cause I know the council has good questions. So far, so good?
Mayor, please. What, one thing I might point out to be, by having this large unfunded liability, and we only have a million and a half basically in both funds, it kind of, it seems to me it's like the PBI. I mean, basically, we're, we're, we're running the same scenario as the PBI was. In fact, it's, 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 what's happening to us is, we're not getting the returns, and when there's a negative, it still goes negative against us, but we never get the twenty-seven percent returns that we would've had. So, so it's kind of like the PBI, we don't get, it works both ways against us.
So you just said if, you know, we did that route where we bonded out and we paid a hundred percent or whatever we decide. What's gonna keep it from running back up again?
Okay, uh, excellent question. Now Clark touched on this, didn't he? So, uh, you're getting ahead of me a little bit, but let's talk about it. So, um, let's say we do a, we do a bond issue, and we wire the money to PSPRS who are one hundred percent funded on, you know, X day. Well, we're gonna get a new actuarial report from PSPRS, and depending upon all the actuarial math, the investment returns, and all the things they calculate, they could come back and say, you were a hundred percent funded, but because of the actuarial calculations, now you're, let's pick a number, ninety-five percent funded. Okay? You're like, ah. So, in order to kind of plan for that, we're gonna introduce a, what we call a reserve fund into the transaction. Okay? And we're gonna, and it's not required as part of doing one of these pension bonds we're gonna talk to you about. But we run a lot of complicated math for staff and for council to determine kind of a set aside reserve fund, it's your asset. And in the event we get a surprise, the city can draw on the reserve fund, fund it back up to the hundred percent, right? And then replenish that reserve fund over time. Okay, that's, that's one way we're handling it.
I know that is a concern, 'cause it's like, okay, so we, we do all this, and we pay it off, and then the next thing you know, five years, ten years down the road, here we, here we are again.
We don't need any catastrophic events anymore. Go ahead, Mayor.
One thing I might point out, that I consider is, all the new hires are under the tier three, which has been doing a lot, lot better than the one and two. So once we pay our liability off, yeah, we still got some old people over there that are still on tier one, two, that are still coming on.
We call them chief. Yeah, I'm with the Bisbee, people live long down there, so that's all I'm saying.
No, we'll still have those responsibilities, but over the long, the next ten years, most of the retirees that we're gonna be funding are gonna be on the tier three system.
But you'd also be able to reap the benefits of the, uh, the stock market. Do you have, was it a question of the past? So you'd be getting that, and then help pay off.
Let me give you a quick example, good questions, by the way, let me give you a quick example. Remember we talked about that little funding ratios? You guys couldn't take advantage of the twenty-seven percent returns? So, the city of Flagstaff was the first city to do the pension bond two years ago, or the first ones. They called me up one day, they're one of my clients, and they were so irritated over the most recent PSPRS actuarial report. They said, we gotta do something about this. And that's when they called, and when I, I got my colleagues on the phone from East Chicago, and we'll put this program together. So that one, we did in July of twenty, for a hundred and twenty-five million. And they wired one twenty-five to, to PSPRS, and they had their best year ever.
Oh, it was a great year.
Now they're overfunded. Nothing wrong with that? So you all get, you all, you know, you all are getting up. So, yeah, we'll, we'll, and, so that's how we're gonna kind of address that. Okay. So page seven is, uh, the interest rate markets, okay? So one of the decisions, and we're working very hard right now, as you all know, we're trying to go as fast as we can, where, uh, you know, we have the November election, uh, unless we wanna go sooner, which maybe we can talk about at some point.
Sooner with the budget, not with the election.
Yeah. The Federal Reserve, as you know, we have the highest inflation we've had in forty years. That was around forty years ago. I know I don't look it, but I remember, but that was life. You all, a lot of you were as well.
I brought my boots today.
So.
I shovel.
Yeah.
Any, any mortgage stories? I mean, your first mortgage was, you know, sixty percent, remember those days?
And I know you could tell a story about it, and I first was what percent then?
Twelve percent, wow, unbelievable. I refinanced mine at two and, two and seven eights last year. Okay. So as you all know, you read the papers and follow markets and all that, so now the Federal Reserve has a, has a tough job because they're trying to tap the brakes to reduce inflation. And they're saying six to seven rate, six to seven rate increases. We just had a quarter of a percent last week, and they're thinking the next one in May is gonna be a half a percent. So they're tapping the brakes. Well, in the meantime, you know, that's not good for pension bonds, we want the lowest borrowing cost we can. So, as you can see on the right-hand chart here, this is the ten-year US Treasury bond that you hear about all the time, right? That's what the government borrows at. And today it hit, uh, uh, it hit three, like, two fifty, okay? The Flagstaff that they're, it was point five. So, uh, anyway, uh, and then, and then, you know, the Russian-Ukrainian situation happened, as you all know. That's not good for bond markets because it, it raises rates because of uncertainty in the world. So that raises rates. So now we're kind of in this, so I haven't lost a lot of sleep yet, uh, bear with us, is what we would ask. We're gonna continue to monitor this closely, we're moving as fast as we can. And, uh, we're gonna keep you posted, and, uh, let's assume that everything works our way in the next couple of months, maybe longer. Okay. So let's go down to page eight. And I'm gonna go kind of fast here, so, um, on page eight, the graph on the right-hand side, you see the red bars? That's the do nothing scenario that we already talked about. That's not good, none of us like that. Okay? The concept would be to issue, uh, you see the, go on the left-hand side there, you see the twenty-one point eight seven nine? That's the twenty-two million I've been rounding, that's your liability. And then we're, we're thinking about sizing in this reserve fund to give you a cushion. And we've estimated that to be a million seven. So we would go on the market and issue somewhere around twenty-four million dollars in the city of Bisbee bonds. Okay? And we're gonna walk you through that in a moment. Uh, go up, go up above, I'm hoping this is high. This thing, this darn thing's gone up on us, you know, one percent. But if we can get you four seventy-five or four fifty money, bear with us, right? Um, you know, the good old days lesson that, but let's go in the fours for now. And we sell twenty-four million, and we wire twenty-two million to PSPRS. We replace that with the blue bars. You see the blue bars there? That would be your debt service payments. 'Cause the red bars go away. That's the good, the cool thing about these pension bonds, we can reconfigure our payments, no different than a mortgage or any other, no different than a utility bond issue we worked together on. That's our call. That's your call. And we're gonna show you a couple of different options here. So you see the blue bars? I like that. See how level it is? You're not dealing with all this. Okay? So, that's graphically depicted. Goes all the way out to forty-eight there. Now, let's go to the next page, it's a little easier. Okay, lots of math, right? Get, get you ready for your budget session, that'll be probably, yeah. Okay, so on page nine, uh, those are the future value red line payments. Remember we talked about that? So you're gonna pay fifty million dollars, the actuaries are telling us, because you're anti-unfunded liability over that thirty-year period, now it's, now it's twenty-six, twenty-five, that you will pay thirty million dollars in interest. Twenty-two, twenty-two round minus fifty, let's go, you know. Okay, that's the do nothing at all scenario. If we look at this pension bond alternative we're all talking about tonight, we would issue the twenty-four million, I just went over with you, ish. And we try to get four, four fifty, four seventy-five money. And we level your payments out at, in column B. Basically, we're gonna get you to a million seven in this scenario, you see it? And we're not gonna, we're not gonna have payments higher than what you would pay anyway, so you can see in column C, the savings. We're, we only wanna do this if there's savings for the city. So, under this kind of preliminary structure, we're coming up with ten point, look at the bottom there, ten point five million dollars of savings. 'Cause remember, you're paying what, seven point three percent on twenty-two million? That's what you're paying them, yeah?
Why is, um, the next to the last so much greater than everyone else?
The next to the last?
Yeah.
Yeah, drop, so that's actuarial, so some retirees are coming off the books.
Oh, okay.
Right? Uh, something's happened in two thousand forty-eight.
Yeah.
You know, maybe we need to let them know that, but.
It was just such a drastic.
Yeah. No, it's a good, no, yeah, I saw that too, and it's like, uh, what, what happened there, so. Okay. So, we, essentially what we're doing is we're replacing seven point three percent money with four point, I don't know, four seven right now. You know? Okay? And so.
What, what's the cost to us? What's the expense to us for us to do this?
Um, all, all these, all these costs have, uh, are net of expenses. I don't really know what your expenses are, but, you know, you know, they're, it's four or five hundred thousand dollars in expenses, maybe more, I gotta kind of get my arms around it.
But you give us this number?
Yeah, I'll give you, I'll, I'll give you all the numbers, we kind of just use an estimate. And a lot of that's gonna be a function of how this thing shakes out. So going with this scenario, you see the ten-five, that's good news. And then we present value it, what's that benefit today would be five point, you know, five million. So, I think I like it. I like five million in present value, I like ten million in budget, okay? Now, if these rates kick off on us, all these numbers, when we come back and report you're gonna go down, and that's why we're all just hanging on, and praying that we're gonna, we can get this thing done, okay? All right, so that's scenario one, I'm gonna go on to scenario, well, let me just tell you what the difference between scenario one and scenario two is real quick, sorry to get in the weeds. All right. In order to get scenario number one done, I think, what we've been working really hard on. And I've been a little worried about approaching the credit rating agencies with a twenty-two million dollar pension liability, fair? And that's one reason why we never did a public sale in the past. We're looking at a public sale because of the long amortization, okay? I need to get you in the A credit rating range, that's our goal. Okay? That's a good credit rating. And looking at your financials, you guys are doing okay. And I think with the sales tax approval, it's even better. So the question before us now, and we're planning, we're planning for this now, we're meeting with the credit rating agencies in two weeks. We have a staff meeting next week to go over all the materials. And these credit rating agencies look at four things, just give you, they look at your economy. Now, your economy's more limited, fair? You're a little more limited than Sierra Vista's, or, you know, Marana, certainly Tucson. They look at, they, they wanna see. They look at, they, they want to see what drives your economy. Your local sales tax is your lifeblood. So our economy is, you know, um, is, call it more limited. So we're gonna walk them through the Bisbee economy. They look at your finances. That's huge, obviously. They're looking at your reserves. And we're gonna bring you a general fund reserve policy soon for you to adopt to keep a reserve. I wanna say the number is somewhere around one-four. That's your cushion. Uh, it'll be adopted by the city council and you'll do your best to abide by it. If you have a situation, you can always go below that, it's not the end of the world. We're gonna work really hard to keep this reserve in case there's a problem. Economy tanks on us or what happened. Finances are, are critical. Uh, reserves are critical to the economy. Uh, debt load, which you're doing a pretty good job on there, except for your tier-one, tier-two unfunded liability. And they also look at the management team and the city council, maybe to a lesser extent on council, because you're policy-oriented, but they, they, they wanna look at leadership.
This before one-seven, unless we get our rating, that's not guaranteed.
Right, none of this is guaranteed, so that's why we know we're really, we're, uh, we're being very careful and very measured and thoughtful.
Okay.
And Kerry's done a fantastic job and Steve doing projections. Where are we going in the future? Uh, we've drawn down on our reserve funds, we've made some changes, we're making lots of assumption changes all the time. We're gonna share those with the rating agency to get them comfortable. So my, our biggest job right now is to get you in that investment grade category, cause you've never done that in your history.
We've never had an S and T.
Oh, we've never been there before.
Never had it, never really, never really needed to. Never really needed to. But we think in this one, we're gonna need it, so we're, anyway, we're managing that process now. And then I'm gonna try to maybe even get another, what we call credit enhancement, all those things. Uh, need to come together so that when we go out and sell bonds to investors, that's my other job. After we do all the math, working with you all, my real job is to go out and find investors who believe in the City of Bisbee. So then I go spend hours with investors. It's a good city, they care, they've got a good plan. We want you to buy the bonds, we want you to buy the bonds at the lowest possible rate for it. All good? So I wanted to share with you, uh, kind of that stage of our, uh, staff, uh, process, okay? All right, now, let's, let's go to the scenario number three. This is totally hypothetical, and I wanted to share it with you. Um, you know, when we did the Flagstaff deal, they, uh, had the budget capacity and the, the resources to shorten their amortization. So they said, can we shorten it? We said, of course. We said, they said, run it, pay it off six years early. Okay, so some of our clients who have, uh, decided to do a pension bond have decided to pay them off early. City of Wilcox is one of our clients, and they decided to go a couple, three years early. So this scenario here, just bear with us, uh, on page thirteen, if you go to column B, it's hypothetically assumed at the moment that you could afford a payment of a million nine, almost a little less than two million. And you obviously can only do this if you have a revenue stream, right? So let's just say hypothetically, you pass your sales tax, you're one percent, and you dedicate, help me out, Mayor, X amount to streets. It's been a good program, and you want to continue to improve your streets in your community. And then we're gonna dedicate X amount over here, and we're gonna try to get this pension debt off our books. This would simply be a hypothetical scenario we could shorten, okay? Now maybe we can't shorten it, what is that, seven years? Uh, six, one, two, three, six years, six or seven years. But I only wanted to give you this as an example, from a legacy perspective. And, and I know that's, looks great about you all addressing this from a legacy perspective. I know this is important for Steve, that if you could afford it, there's a way to shorten, okay? Try to not gonna blabber anymore.
You go on from ten million to sixteen million and six.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you pay it, you know, shorten it by seven years.
Yeah, so, you know, you can't get yourself in a pickle either, and, you know, it's, it's just, just think about it. Cause we're gonna have additional meetings, obviously, with you. Okay, then, okay, so let me, uh, share this. I know we have some new council members here, and I know, I, I know two or three of you are on with the sewer bonds. You, you run the sewer, you're.
Yeah.
So, uh, let me, let me give the council a quick overview of what we'll bring to you later on. So when our cities decide to do these financings, it's very common all across the state for our cities to pledge certain revenues. This gets the rating agencies comfortable and it gets, you know, the investors comfortable and all that. So we're gonna pledge on the left-hand side, your local city sales tax. It does not include sewer, it does not include streets at the moment. All good? And you finished, you had a good year in twenty-twenty-one. It just, you closed the books, you got your audit done, good job on that. And your local sales tax, you had your best year ever. A million eight-seventy-six, okay? So very good news there. And then the state sales tax, uh, vehicle license tax, state shared revenues, license increments, fines and forfeitures. So if we just use twenty-twenty-one for now, it'd be about four and a half million of, you know, close the books, pledge the revenues. And I, I want that number to be as high as it can be, obviously. And then if you go over to twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four on the right-hand side, uh, if you renew your, your one percent and you get about nine hundred, then we're gonna add that to the pledge, cause it helps us, uh, better, better secure, you better, better for the foundation, okay? So I just wanna let you know, it doesn't preclude you from using the revenues, but it is a pledged revenue. We've done it before for your city, it worked very well, and that's, that's the recommendation. And then, uh, on page fifteen, it just kind of shows all the numbers we went over. You see the four and a half million of pledged revenues. Maybe it goes to five and a half. Uh, we have our current bonds, which is our utility bonds, the five-fifty-two, okay? Uh, that's being paid out of the, uh, dedicated sales tax and I think some utility rest. And then we layer in the twenty-four million. We get to our million, you know, a million six, million seven number. And then, uh, our coverage for every dollar of debt, we have two dollars of coverage. So it's on the, a little bit on the low end, so I, I wanna, I wanna do a little bit more work on this. And it'll go up if we have, if we wait till November, we get the other nine hundred, okay? Okay, so I'm gonna pause there, and I've got two more slides and we'll answer questions and get it wrapped up. Any questions so far relative to the pledged revenues and how we structure the bonds? Okay?
Mark?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna, uh, comment, um, while you're looking at all these numbers, um, cause you, you've seen a couple, three different scenarios now. Yeah, I wish the heat was on too. The, uh, the, the, all of these columns here, in all of these scenarios, do not include one important thing. This is debt, okay? We also make a payment, you, you saw it in the pie graphs earlier presentation. There's, there's the current debt, not debt, there's the current premiums that we pay every year, every month to PSPRS for the pensions, okay? So, um, when you compare, uh, what we're showing you here against, um, what you see on your, your budgets and your, um, financial statements, uh, and, and the audits too. Um, what you're seeing is the debt service we're paying plus the current premiums. So, um, keep in mind, as we're talking about this, that, you know, well, you know, a million seven isn't too much, it isn't too bad, cause we're paying a million and a half this year? Well, no. That million and a half is in next year's budget, is for the premiums and for the debt service. So, um, these numbers are gonna get proportionately higher. So, and, and that's been kind of, and, and we talk about this in almost every meeting, okay? What, what can we really tolerate? And what, and, and this goes directly to, uh, you know, the decision that we need to make on sales tax. What should the tail, sales tax be? And what portion of it should go to debt service? And what portion should go to streets and infrastructure? Okay, that's gonna, that's, that, at that point, to me, anyway, it becomes a very difficult decision. And, and we haven't made it yet.
I mean, also, like you said, when the budget comes in, we start turning about, about budgets. We can, we can have maybe some other ideas on, on, on sources of revenues where we can, I mean, before we go to get a bond, before we put it in the market, we can show them that we have some other streams we will come up into.
If this pie chart runs true, then seventy percent of that payment that we're paying goes away. That can be attributed to the, to the debt, to the quantity.
Yeah, yeah, we, we start, um, with what Clark was telling us earlier. Uh, and, and what he found out in the Flagstaff scenario is that all of a sudden, we're overfunded.
Well, yeah, when you said, you know, we still have obligations to the employees as they are now and still paying their, their, their debt, but, but seventy percent of the, the part that we're paying right now, which is the unfunded part disappears when you.
Right, and it could go towards the bond payment.
Yeah, and that part could down, but, but that's Kerry's job to.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, no, thanks, Mark, this is, no, this is all healthy. Uh, okay, other questions? Any other questions? Um, the, the, you know, the revenue, the revenue is really important. But let's, let's, let's make another hypothetical real quick. Let's make a hypothetical, and let's hope this isn't the case, that interest rates rise at such a magnitude that it doesn't make sense to you to pension bond. But bear with me. And let's hope that doesn't, we have, you know, we got, we got present value five million now, we may lose a little bit or whatever. Um, but if that were to happen and this thing got put on the shelf, um, and you had your election, and you rededicated some of the revenue to pensions, that would be a way to.
To pay, to pay it off.
Pay that down, more contributions, right? The C plus I. Um, or use as a combination with a bond issue more on its own. So I know you guys know that, so I just, I'm not trying to be doom and gloom here, but.
So just to be understand, it's, the bond, for some reason, between now and then, the interest rate goes and we decide, and if we get this passed, that will be, that money will be, be directed into the fund.
That's right.
Yeah. Just like what Flagstaff did.
Yeah.
So, so every million dollars you pay into the fund extra, it's like paying double house payments.
Yeah.
Then your, your unfunded liability goes down and then your pension, your payments go down.
Okay, so let's go to page eighteen. So what are the risks of doing pension bonds, okay? So if a city, uh, does, does a transaction, or a county, you know, or a fire district, all three of them done, there's a couple of risks. One's actuarial, but you're gonna have the actuarial risk anyway. Because people, you know, there's a disability issue, right? Uh, there's people who no longer, uh, there's all kinds of things that'll change that. You're gonna have that whether, whether you, whether you do a pension bond or not, really. The other, uh, big risk is if we borrow at four, let's use four-seventy-five for now. These are taxable bonds, not taxes yet. And we wire, uh, twenty-two million to PSPRS. And they don't get a return on average of greater than four-point-seventy-five percent, then we should not do a pension bond. Then we go backwards. So, uh, Clark, I appreciate Clark doing this. So, uh, when you make a decision to do a pension bond, our city councils and our staffs have to have confidence in the pension system. And there's been, as, as Clark mentioned, under prior administrations, there's been some frustrations. Uh, and since Mike Townsend came in the room, the CEO, and Clark and the team, and they, they have a new management team and a new philosophy, what's happened is, uh, we've done, I think, thirty-five or forty of these, our city councils, including Flagstaff, uh, Anna, there's Wilcox, Douglas did one, you're a neighbor in the south, that they've thought about it, they, they met with them like we have tonight, they've had separate conversations with them. And even have some cities that wanna talk to their chief investment officer. That's the person at the pension fund that makes the major decisions on what to invest in. They're a global fund. You can imagine what they look at every day. They look at international funds, they look at real estate projects, they look at private credit, they look at equities, they look at private companies, they, they take public, they, they do all this amazing stuff. And we've been in the room with the chief investment officer. What are you doing? What are you investing in? I wanna have confidence that you're gonna be able to get me a return greater than four-point-seventy-five percent. So what Clark had shared on this chart on page twenty-seven was they had their best year ever, twenty-seven-point-eight, and their ten-year average has been seven-point-eight.
Everybody had almost over twenty percent.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, I'm not, you know, yeah, even if you didn't do anything, you get twenty percent.
And ASRS had a good, that's another pension plan, you know, we talked about it, some point two. They had a good year, and up until the Ukrainian-Russian invasion, my portfolio, my personal retirement plan, we feel, was down fourteen percent.
Yeah.
And I'm still in a good mood, but I'm, um, okay, so.
You're one out of her ten, twenty, and thirty.
Yeah, so go on their website, and Clark touched on this, they got a ten-year return, they got a twenty-year return, they got a thirty-year return, PSPRS.
You have the companies that they invest in, you have.
Uh, all that's on there, yeah, all that's on there. You know, and again, just to be completely transparent, and if you're interested, we can, you know, you tell us what gets you all comfortable. So, um, their ten-year return is seven-eighty, and their thirty-year return, I think, is in the sevens. I wanna say, I think, right around seven and a piece. But if you look at their twenty-year return, they were like three-fifty. Now, why was that? The Great Recession, Clark touched on this, remember that? And so, uh, we all pray, trust and hope that we'll, that we never have another Great Recession. So I guess my point, I just wanna give you a frame of reference relative to the, to the new management team and what their historical returns are then. And so, think about it, and, um, as long as we can get our cost of borrowing, we're really not anywhere soft. So we'll continue to monitor all those numbers and we'll be making some decisions here, um, as soon as we possibly can. So with that, um, on page twenty, our next steps, I've already talked about this. We're going through the credit rating process, uh, the insurance process. We're consideration of our sales tax renewal, no decisions have been made on that, reconfiguration. November twenty-two election, which means your city council likely has to approve it. And we're gonna need Joe to draft the ordinance, you know, relatively soon for you to start reviewing in the June-July timeframe.
When would you know about the bond if we decided, I mean, af- after you do the rating and how, what's the period? Are you talking about a couple of, a couple of months, couple of weeks? I mean, before we get to the, you know, number five, why are bonds, funds, I mean, when would you have.
Okay, so if we wait for the election, which we can do, we'll, we'll start to tee everything up. The, the election is November fifth or sixth, it's early November, probably selling bonds two or three weeks later. November twenty-two, that's nine months from now. Maybe December, first week of December. If we decide strategically, as a team, because we think rates are gonna gravitate, and I can get you to that, that credit rating without the election, right? That's a, that's a, that's a maybe, and maybe we go earlier. And I think we just plan for both, we bring back the information, we make a decision.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be better, isn't it?
No, you're absolutely right, it's gonna look better. But, but the downside is now. But the downside is, now, uh, you are, uh, you are banking on voter approval.
Yeah.
One point I wanted to, since I follow markets a bit, but it's, there's this inverted bottom now, where actually, long-term are less money than short-term, which is very backwards. So, that may be in our favor, because we're going longer term on these. It keeps the rates lower for long-term. Am I wrong?
Yeah, that, I mean, yeah, the, the short term's going up faster than the long term. We just have to hope that the long term doesn't start to gravitate up.
Yeah, I know, but right now, that's where we're at.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, that could help us. We gotta get the war over, I think we gotta get the war over with. That's gonna reduce our spreads, that, that's costing us, you know, thirty, you know, twenty-five or thirty-five basis points. We gotta get that thing settled, hopefully, for many reasons. And then, we gotta hope that the Federal Reserve manages this carefully. And remember, over the years, we have had some Federal Reserves that know how to manage it, tap, 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 and not go. So that's what we're all, you know, praying together, and hoping that all three of those all come together while we work all the credit rating stuff out together.
It's always good to have a lunch a year too, because it keeps the.
It's the pressure.
But you don't expect it to, to, to come down? I mean, because you've decided you're gonna have about six or seven.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
I would think it's not expected.
This one's just saying, we can't, you know, bank, it's gonna go lower. And that's why I have to make a decision based on.
So, it has to be in a general, not a primary election?
It has to be in a general election in an even number of years.
Any other questions before we all freeze it in?
I'm already freezing.
Okay, well, so if anything is good, we can go on for another hour.
Oh, we saw him quorum.
And just last question. This is that you, you tell us later how much it's gonna cost us. Uh, do, do we pay from our money, or it's from the money that we're gonna get?
Comes out of the bond issuance.
Okay.
All that'll be net, net, net of all the numbers, I'm sure, you know, that, figure all that out.
Um, one thing I'm gonna do now that I know that it's okay, because I didn't know until I asked Clark just a little while ago, um, the analysis that PSPRS did five years ago of Bisbee Fire, and I was hoping they had done Bisbee PD too, um, but they didn't. And that's okay. It was, was very thorough, um, very revealing, um, and to some degree, um, it has, well, I'm not gonna say to some degree. It, it basically tells you step by step, item by item, event by event, what has caused Bisbee Fire, and call it Bisbee Police too, because it's all the same path. Um, the, uh, it tells the story in vivid detail, okay? And, um, and all of the things that I know all of us have been saying, uh, for the last few years, about, um, the responsibility for bailing out the system, okay? Is pretty damning for the state. I mean, I'm just gonna say it in public, so everybody can hear me. Um, I, I know that myself and, and others have lobbied to find a way to get the state to take some of its largesse. And, can I have a mic? For some reason, the mayor wants this to be heard. And help those of us, because we're not alone, we're just about the worst, but we're not alone, to, uh, use some of the things that have put the state in such... I don't know what I can call it, it's almost extreme. I mean, there's, I, I don't know what their surplus is right now, but it's billions and billions. Okay? I said that with a B, okay? And yet, this year, the legislature saw fit to introduce a bill to pay off the unfunded liability of, of all of their PSPRS agencies, okay? DPS, directions, uh, I'm forgetting several. But never gave a thought to the fact that what had happened to them happened to the rest of us, and it happened to us, I think, a lot worse than it happened to most of the state agencies. So, um, now that I know I can do this, I'm gonna email, so look at your email tomorrow, okay? I'm gonna email you this story, okay? Um, when, after you've done reading this, you're gonna just be, it's, it's gonna blow you away. Because there was almost nothing that the city of Bisbee could have done to avoid the situation that we're talking about mitigating today, okay? And I'm also gonna use that, it's too late now in the, in the legislative session, but I'm also gonna use it to say to my legislators, and to those I know who aren't our legislators, that perhaps, now that you've taken care of yourself, perhaps you should take a look at the whole system and see what you can do to solve this problem for everybody. Our law enforcement partners, our public safety partners, and state government, work side by side with us every single day, okay? Why do we deserve less? I think that's a legitimate question. I think that, um, you know, my conversations with the lead of Arizona Cities and Towns, and, and, and they've actually gone to bat for Bisbee to see if there was a way in, once, you know, the camel got its nose under the tent with the state agencies, and say, hey, wait a minute, there's still a problem out there. And, uh, who puts out fires on state land? Think about it. Just recently, okay? We do this stuff all the time. And I think that the state of Arizona should recognize it. I think with, armed with the information that we now have, because we've been putting this together for, what, three, four months now? Uh, and with the information, and with, P, PSPRS is more forthcoming to us now than they have ever been. Uh, thanks, thanks to Mike, thanks to Clark. And, uh, so now we know, now we know. Armed with that information, I think we should start building a coalition, and then hopefully, at least next year, we can get some recognition that, yes, we deserve, um, some of the spoils that state government has spent on their own agencies. So, on that, I'm gonna step down off my soapbox, and Mayor gonna let you do whatever.
After we've spoken, we'll be speaking more, a few more times about this, I'm sure. And, and we'll move on now tonight, and, and open this public hearing, and, and deal with the one that's gonna hit us first, which is this home rule. So, moving on, item number two, this is a public hearing to consider submitting a proposal to the voters to authorize city expenditures in excess of the limitations of Article Nine, Section Twenty of the Arizona Constitution, known as the Home Rule Option. Do you wanna present this, or should Kerry?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Kerry, because she's my home rule expert. I just, uh, I'll just introduce the topic. Careful going home.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you so much.
See you soon.
I'll just introduce the topic, uh, maybe, uh, by saying that, um, we have, and, we have a base all, we have a base expenditure limitation, um, which went, it went into effect back in the late seventies, was one point six million dollars. That would be the amount the state would allow us to spend for our total budget, okay? Uh, over the years, that has been increased, and I think it's now something just a little bit in excess of three million dollars, three million dollars a year. Which means that for our, pretty much our total operation, we would have three million dollars to spend using the state's, um, expenditure limitation law, okay? Now, uh, for a lot of years, um, we have, uh, the voters of Bisbee have voted to allow us to use an alternative expenditure limitation number, okay? And we, we're on the normal system where every four years, we have to go back to voters and have that ratified, if you will, okay? And Kerry works out the expenditure limitation number in time to place it on ballot, and then that becomes our expend, expenditure limitation for the next four years after voter approval. So, now, let me just give you a couple of examples. What we just finished talking about tonight, okay? In next year's budget, um, we're going to pay public safety retirement system one point five million dollars, okay? That would be fifty percent of our expenditure limitation, if we had to live with, with the state's limitation, okay? Add to that Bisbee Fire Department, okay? That's, give or take a few hundred thousand. It's a two-million-dollar budget, so now we're over it, okay? So, now we, we can pay our debt, we can pay most of the fire department, no money for the rest of the city operations, no money for podbells, no money for anything. So, I'm, I'm just giving that example to put an exclamation point on the importance of setting an alternative, uh, expenditure limitation at a level which we can legitimately operate the city of Bisbee. And that, you know, I, I think you all know very, very well what it includes. It includes public safety, it includes public works, um, it includes things like the library, things like the pool, um, things like, um, processing your waste down at the wastewater treatment factory, uh, picks up your garbage, um, and, uh, and a myriad of other things that I won't go into. So, um, so what this public hearing is about is to gather information from the public. And, uh, and then after we've done two of these public hearings, then we will, um, ask you to adopt something to put on the ballot for, this would be at the primary election in August. We can do that in August.
This is a second public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just gave this speech a second time.
Just by clarification, sort of.
That's why we're gonna have item three.
Okay, so I think, Mel, before you say anything, uh, Mayor, I think, has the whole public hearing.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're not gonna discuss this. I don't know if there's anything, Kerry, I have a couple of questions really quickly that this numbers that you've put in here, I'm hoping that people pulled it up off the, off the website. Includes like City Hall, and includes other things that might be, which we might end up having to pay for. So, so, yeah, we're gonna be asking for twenty point six million, twenty-one nine. Well, it goes up, next year will be twenty point four, and then, because it goes for four years, it goes up a little bit each year, up to twenty-one nine on twenty twenty-six.
This includes all city operations with the exception of?
Grants?
Grants.
Grants.
Grants are in the twenty, like the twenty-two, twenty-two nine.
Cause.
So that, um.
I'm a little confused, because we, we're to get the wa, the water, that's a fifty-five million dollar grant.
Yeah, I wasn't sure about putting the grants in there, because there's the possible storm laterals, there's the fire suppression system, there's maybe Bisbee bikeways, I think there was some other ones. If I put all those grants in there, I would have to put like forty million or something. And I don't know, those amounts that are in there are estimates that get sent to the state, and they're not something that we have to stick to. It's just an estimate we send to the state. The actual expenditure limitation is set every year when we pass a budget. So every year, we know better, closer to what it's gonna be than.
Actually, actually, right, not guessing if we get a grant.
Right.
The other thing I just wanna make a point of, um, would be that we have to have a balanced budget every year, we buy state law. So people understand we're not just inflating this number so we can go somewhere.
That's what's mine, was I was trying to point.
All right, but, 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 that was my, I, I get a little more, a little more chance to say things. But I'm gonna hold the public hearing now, and then we'll, if you have more questions, then Kerry will.
That's fine.
But, uh, so, I'm open to this public hearing, and so I'm going to ask first, uh, the members of the public in support of this item. Is there anybody here that would, uh, like to speak in support of this item? Okay, seeing none, yeah, is there any, uh, buddy here to speak in opposition? Okay? You have a total maximum that we allow for fifteen minutes, that's usually three minutes per person. Just state your name and the basic, uh, place where, that you are a city resident, and go ahead.
Uh, my name is Nolan Meket, and I live on, uh, Lutreau, number one.
Nolan, can, can I ask you to get close enough to Mike so we can record you?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, okay.
Or you can pull it out if you want to.
Okay. The city of Bisbee is asking voters to authorize city expenditures in excess of limitations set by state law. I do not agree with the city's proposition. The reason is because this governing body has proved time and time again that's incapable of handling public money in a reasonable way. This is our opportunity as a community to put an end to their wasteful excessive spending. The city is asking that we authorize their spending limit from one point four to three point six million dollars.
Not quite correct.
Go ahead. It's kinda like if you had a teenager who wanted you to extend their credit card limit, so let's think of. Currently costs seventy-five dollars a month in Bisbee for trash and sewer. That's at nine hundred dollars a year. The reason our costs and taxes are so high is because of the perpetual wastefulness of these politicians. In Finland and Sweden, people pay, people are happy to pay taxes. The reason they don't mind paying taxes is because they get a lot for it. And I wish I could say the same thing about here, but I don't know why it's not like that here. It's like what Mel was saying, why, why for so long? But that's just what government does to people. I don't know, it's just a brain-dead thing, you know? And the whole thing is just a balloon that's about, that's gonna burst, you know? Uh, that's just my opinion. This, this city is constantly neck-deep in lawsuits. They pay, they paid me seventy-five thousand dollars for violent infractions against me instigated by Bisbee Police, in a First Amendment federal lawsuit. And I know right now, they got the situation with, uh, Ms. Bobby, I think, Ms. Kobe, I'm not exactly sure how to say it, but, uh, an elderly woman was kicked out of her house by the city, her own house. And, uh, I know at the last meeting, uh, y'all were talking about paying her fifty-five thousand dollars. In my opinion, she deserves it. But where does all this money come from? That we're paying out on all these lawsuits? Where does it come from? Your time's getting really close to the three minutes. Even Ken, but has a, he has a lawsuit against the city, so I don't know how that works. City company taxes, well, we paid for it. We paid for all the lawsuits, we paid for all the nepotism, we paid for it all. And what is the biggest expenditure to the city? Like we've been talking about, is the public safety, is the police. And I think it was, Steve, you were saying earlier today that, like, Bisbee, like, you were saying the fire department, we have like twenty-one firefighters, a lot for a small town. And I don't know exactly how many police officers we have, but I think it's about fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. If you look at a town like, if you look at a town like Benson, please wrap it up, they have like six or seven dogs.
Your time is up, please wrap it.
So, um, I would like to encourage the community to support freedom of speech, vote no. Thank you.
All right, any other people would like to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, is there any written communication?
No, sir.
From the clerk. Seeing none. I will close this public hearing. All right, I'm opening up for discussion among council members. Any discussions?
Well, I just wanted to clarify that, and you mentioned the mayor, the public need to know, and maybe own, this basically, this was set years ago, the budget based on a certain income, a certain situation. As the city grew, there's more, and this is a cover. It's not money that we are going to ask for more, it's covered from the revenues. So this is what required to run the city. May I agree or disagree with something, but basically, this is what's required, just to run the city as we go right now. I just want the public to know that, that's all.
Do I get to speak since I have... And then one, one thing to maybe also, you have to consider is, is who pays for lawsuits? We carry insurance, and we all have insurance for those, that reason, whether we have a car accident or whatever. So it is, it is partly or mostly funded from our insurance money, so those types of situations.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just brag a little bit. I was here for eight years, and then I was gone, and now I've been back for a year. No lawsuits were introduced during the ten years that I worked for the city. However, I have settled three. So I think it's maybe not quite right to say that we're always in lawsuits, because that's not the case.
Yeah.
I hope you're right, the insurance company does cover the largest portion of the settlements.
I just wanna make that clarification. Any other comments or questions? If not, I can move on to item three. This is also approved of the resolution R dash twenty-two oh six proposing an extension of the alternative expenditure limitation and authorizing the submittal of this proposition to the electorate at the election to be held on August second, twenty twenty-two. You probably know it all if everybody's read the resolution. I don't think much more. Any questions, comments? And I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve resolution R dash twenty-two dash zero six proposing an extension of the alternative expenditure limitation and authorizing the submittal of this proposition to the electorate at the election to be held on August second, twenty twenty-two. I second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution R dash twenty-two oh six. Roll call.
Councilmember Hill?
Say aye or nay.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominio?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Sui?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye, motion passes, six, zero, unanimous. That should conclude tonight's special session. Motion two?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, nay.